Okay, it is 7:05 on Tuesday, January 8th. We now have a quorum, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is real call.
Rosado, Atack, Stark?
Here.
Chanzet, Salvati?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
O'Brien, Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Euer, Saron, and McFadden?
Here.
Okay, as I mentioned, we do have a quorum to conduct the regular business, so we're going to move on then to item number two, which is the reminder for everyone to use the microphone so we can make sure we get it all tape and the public that may be listening can hear us what we have to say. Item three is removal and adding of any changes or items. Do we have anything?
No.
Nothing? Okay. Item four, matters from the public, for items that are not on the agenda. If anybody has anything for us that's not on the agenda. Okay. Item five, which is the discussion on the annexation of unincorporated islands and an update on this. Memo came out from Scott Buning. Alderman Stark, you going to take this?
Yep.
I'm just going to turn it right over to Scott.
No, I'll take it. Back in 2016 and since then, too, we've been talking to staff regularly about annexing all the little islands. And so this is an update on where we are. I thought, when I read this, it's amazing to me how much additional revenue the city could realize if these areas were finally annexed into the city. So, Scott, whatever you want to add, I mean, this is something where, you know, we can proactively annex these. We would be taking on just a little bit more in terms of roadway, et cetera, that we would have to maintain. The budget impact is revenue exceeding $225,000, and there's no additional staffing impact, except for time spent. So, in order to capture this, we need to have this annexed prior to April 1st, 2020. So, that's the highlight reel. And the rest, Scott?
Sure. Yeah, this is something we've been talking about for a while. We have been working on trying to get a lot of these done with existing annexation and utility agreements. Just to show you real quick, flipping through here, we've had, you know, this shows the annexations we did in 2012, 2013, 2014. We only had a couple, 2015, 16. Again, they're hard to see on this, but you have them in your packet, 2017. And then what we have left is what's in green here. So essentially, these are the surrounded areas that are not within the city limits. Many of these are still on utilities. They might not have had utility agreements, or that they did not require them to annex if they did hook onto utilities. Some of these are resolving themselves. I have one that I'm working on. And then, of course, the Land Meyer Farm, which is on the northwest corner, is subject to a development petition. But as I said in my staff report, you know, there's a substantial amount of revenue that we can get for these properties once they're annexed, both in property taxes and head taxes, provided that we annex them before the next census. Those people are counted as part of the census, and then we get motor fuel taxes and other head taxes from the state based on our population. So if we add those people to the city population, then we get additional revenue. So this is something that, you know, we would try and do over the course of the year. We're not going to do them all at one time. It does take a lot of effort, because if we don't get voluntary annexation petitions, you know, we do have to do notices, and, you know, we always have to do plats of annexation and such to do that. But we feel that, you know, this has been a goal of the city for quite some time in the comprehensive plans, prior strategic plans. And we feel that, you know, now is the right time, particularly with the deadline that we have coming up here, to more proactively do that. I would say that the one thing we will do is, before we annex properties that have any kind of significant development potential, we'll come back to you with those and just decide whether or not we want to do that. We may want to handle those a little bit differently, just because we don't want to lose certain impact fees and other things we could have via an annexation agreement. So what we'll do is work on some of the smaller ones that are primarily existing residential first, and then, once we exhaust those, we'll probably come back to you with, you know, some additional discussion on how we want to handle those other ones.
Scott, these approximately 200 homes that are not annexed yet, have they ever been notified? Is it, are we kind of like, we've done some, but not all?
Well, some of them, some of them we've notified, because some of them had utility agreements, and some frankly just ignored us. They did not contact us, you know, they were supposed to annex by their annexation agreements, and they just said, "No, we're not going to do it." So some have utility agreements, and they just said, "Well, yeah, well, thanks, but we're just not interested," that type of thing. So, but we would send a notice out to them first before we do it. If we have to do it by an involuntary process, we have to send them a notice, and there has to be a public notice in the newspaper and everything that goes through that. So it's a little bit more complicated and more expensive for us to do it that way. But, you know, we would first reach out, you know, to try and get them one more time to voluntarily annex first if we can. That would be the easier and faster way, obviously, so.
And when it comes to, you know, I live in Batavia Township, and Batavia, not me personally, but I'm just saying, as an example. Batavia Township, do they lose, then, that revenue that we gain? And what do they think about things like that?
The township, the township doesn't lose any revenue that they have. Let me see if I can zoom in a little bit. The township doesn't lose any revenue, because it's, they still get the township tax. What happens with the township highway department is, they have to share some of their tax revenue with the city, then. I think they have to pay one half of the road and bridge tax over to the city. But in most cases, they're also losing township roadway mileage. So we take over those additional mileages that they're losing. So that's really the only thing they lose. The county doesn't lose any of their property tax, they still get their share. The only one that really loses tax is the Batavia Township Fire Protection District, and, or Geneva, if it's a Geneva one. But, you know, they're basically, based, you know, the contract from last night, they're basically just paying over their taxes to us anyway, and we provide the service for their district.
Anyone have any questions of Scott?
Mayor?
Oh, sorry.
I mean, I'm supportive of this. The only one that, I'll tell you, I have some real trepidation about annexing would be what is referred to as Sunnyside Park, which is on North Washington Avenue, directly across the street from the East Side Cemetery, going down to the river, just north, not including the trailer park that's up there is already in the city. But the area north of that is these very difficult streets, if you can even drive down them, to get down to them. And I don't know how many people are even still living down there.
There's only about five houses, I think, left.
I have had, in the past, residents down there calling, screaming at me, "It was time the city came down there and fixed their streets." And they're not, I don't believe they're on sewer and water.
Most of them are not on water and sewer. There's a couple of them that the trailer park actually owns that are on sewer.
Right. But there's, it's a very problematic situation. I don't know, for sending our snowplow down there would be, I'm sure we'd get a complaint that we did damage, or we did something, because it's no more than a driveway with a street in there.
Yeah, it's actually a private road, so we would not take over street maintenance, even if we did annex that. But it is very, extremely narrow. If you haven't been down there, it's...
So, I mean, I don't know about that one. I mean, the rest of it's fine, but that one, you know, and the other thing that happened when Phil Elstrom was chairman of the Kane County Board, you know, a lot of those had been abandoned, and so he went down and, through tax sale, he bought a bunch of those properties. So a lot of that is already off the tax rolls, because it's owned by the county forest preserve. And so I don't know what we'd gain by...
There's, right now, there's only one that's owned by the forest preserve that's right on the river. So everything else is still on private ownership, and the city owns one parcel, and we've talked about, you know, the other one as well, so. But, you know, they're all in private ownership right now, other than the one that's right on the river. So I understand that that one's a little more difficult. I think that would be another one we'd come back to before we decide to proceed with that, so.
Well, I'll make my speech again.
Anyone else have any questions? Marty?
I just want to know, what is the legal recourse for someone if they were vehemently opposed to this? How do they, because what would then be our exposure for pro...
There is none. The statute allows municipalities to annex properties under 60 acres. If the proprietors object, it doesn't matter.
And it has to be contiguous?
Has to be contiguous, completely surrounded by the municipality. There's other boundaries, like a river or a forest preserve is considered a boundary.
Right.
But there is no recourse for them to do it. The city has the right under statute to do it.
Okay.
Anyone else? Anyone in the audience want to address the council? Okay. So you're looking for direction?
Just for consensus and direction, yeah. We'll obviously have to bring each one of these back to you for actual action, so.
Do we have a lot of nodding? Is everybody okay with this?
Yep.
Okay, good. Okay, Scott, that's your direction from the whole quorum of us.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is item six, Resolution 19-001-R, authorizing the sale of municipally-owned real estate located at 2150 Main Street. Alderman Stark?
Got it. So the city acquired this land in 2010. It was declared surplus and advertised for sale in 2014. A portion of it was sold in 2017 to allow for future expansion of Tower Car Wash. The city repriced the land with the reduced land area, and we now have received interest in this property. In order to sell it, we need to formally advertise it for auction or bid, and the attached resolution would authorize the advertising of the land by publishing notice. The city would then present the bids that are submitted to the city council, and council can decide whether or not to accept them and successfully close on the property. And the resolution is the terms that are acceptable for this offer. Staff recommends approval of it. The alternatives are approve it, don't approve it. The pros are, would put it back on the tax rolls and get it away from the city, and would, of course, bring immediate revenue to the city by selling off the land. The cons, we would no longer have control over the property. Budget impact, we would have the proceeds. Staffing impact, no impact. Timeline, there's no specific timeline, except there has been interest to potentially purchase, so the sooner we would do this, the better. Does anyone have any questions of Scott, or anyone about this piece of property?
How long of a process is it?
We still have to publish a, well, obviously, council has to approve it at their meeting, and then we have to publish a notice. We'd probably give a 15-day notice, but like I said, we do have at least one interested party in the property. So after that, it would come back to council for acceptance of that bid, and assuming they do, then we can close on the property, once they meet their due diligence and everything else as part of the closing. So, you know, I would say probably within two, two and a half months.
Is there an appraised value for this piece of land?
There was an appraised value for the property. I believe it was $330,000, once we, I think it was $330,000, once we revised it, when we sold the little appendage to the property, if I remember correctly. Appraised value, adjusted appraised value was $335,000, after we lost that appendage.
Okay, great. Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Salvati, second by Meitzler, to approve or send Resolution 19-001-R to city council. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This motion carries.
Do we want to discuss that? Probably should, huh?
Yeah. Publicity for the sale of the piece of property would be great.
Okay, item seven, which is ordinance 19-01, proposing establishment of a special service area number 65 for Barki Farms subdivision. And Alderman Stark?
Got it. So the Barki Farms Homeowner Association is seeking to install a monument sign as an entrance to their subdivision. And the attached letter from the HOA requested the city to establish an SSA for the subdivision to allow the sign. And the SSA, it's a backup SSA again, so if the HOA fails to maintain the sign, then the SSA would kick in. And this is a common improvement maintained by the HOA, and there is no SSA in place for Barki Farms. The requested SSA would cover the sign and other common improvements in subdivisions, such as stormwater management areas. Before staff can approve a building permit for the sign, the SSA must be established. So the state law specifies procedure to establish the SSA that requires the city council first must approve the ordinance proposing the establishment. Then the proposing ordinance sets a hearing date, a form of the notice, and a description of the parcels and the proposed SSA. And a schedule for the process is also attached to the memo. After the hearing, a 60-day period must be provided to allow a petition objecting to the establishment of the SSA. If a petition is filed during the time with at least 51% of the property owners of record and 51% of the registered voters residing in the proposed SSA, then it cannot be formed. So the pros, the approval will create a backup SSA as contemplated in the annexation agreement, allowing the entry monument sign contemplated in the agreement. The cons, staff hasn't identified any negatives with the establishment of a backup SSA. There will be minor costs that will be incurred for staff time to prepare the publication, mailing notices for the proposed SSA, and staff has informed the HOA that they must reimburse the city for costs of notification and document recording fees. And timeline for action, if we pass this, then the timeline starts. And so it's probably to get this, if they want to get the sign in this year, it's probably a good idea to get going on this now.
Yeah, they want to get it done as early as possible, so we're doing it.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Joel, I have a question about this. We have had, you know, we have SSAs in place in other parts of, parts of town. And when it comes to, you know, the HOA disappears, and then suddenly the city's mowing the lawn, and then people get very upset when we try to make the SSAs kick in. How are we going to stop that from happening? I mean, if we're going to put an SSA in place, it would be really nice if we actually put some teeth behind it.
Well, this will put teeth behind it. If we incur an actual expense to do any maintenance, whether it's here, this backup SSA is really no different than any other one the council has done recently. It's just, why is it coming to you now that's a little different? The homeowners association wants the sign. We don't have a backup SSA in place, so we inform them in order to get the sign, we have to do this backup SSA. So that's why it's here now. Once the backup SSA has been established, it remains dormant. There is no charge to any homeowner in the event that the homeowners association fails to perform its obligation in maintaining any common facility, or the, in the event the homeowners association dissolves and is no longer there. If the city incurs an expense to do any of the maintenance, we can then seek reimbursement through enacting the, through triggering the special service area.
Right.
And that will be a payment on a tax bill.
Right. But we have other SSAs that we are mowing the lawns and doing things like that, that we've never triggered the backup SSA. And it's like a thorn in my side that has gone on for multiple years. And so that's why, you know, it's like, why do we just keep creating these if we're never going to, you know, if we're going to incur costs and never pull the trigger and have the residents pay?
We did try to implement a few of them a few years back.
Oh, I remember.
And there was pushback from the folks in those areas, because they didn't want the additional tax. So, you know, we can implement them, it's just that, you know, we have to make the decision that that's something we want to do, to implement additional tax on those folks to pay for the maintenance. So, you know, we can, we just haven't.
And that yearly, it comes up yearly about, it has to be done by like June or July, doesn't it, for the following tax year?
I think you have to have, you record it, I think, before the end of December. There's a certain deadline in December that you have to record an SSA in order for it to be effective for the following year, so.
Okay, great, thank you. And then the second part of this question is, I thought, for some reason, and I can't remember if it's something I read or something we've talked about at council, is that putting up monument signs in front of subdivisions is something I thought we were getting away from. I may have imagined that.
No, we, the current zoning code prohibits them.
I thought so. Okay, good.
But because this is still under an effective annexation agreement that specifically mentions an entry sign, if they want to have one, they can have one.
Okay. Okay. Does anyone else have any questions about this? Anyone in the audience here to speak to this? Okay. So would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a so moved from, oh, Meitzler, second by Malley. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This motion carries.
So this will go to the next city council meeting?
Yeah.
For approval. Okay. Consent?
Sure.
Okay. Item number nine, Resolution 19-002-R, the towing contract. Alderman Wolf.
Thank you.
I think you skipped eight.
Yep.
Yeah, you skipped the surplus property.
I did. Ordinance, item number eight, ordinance 19-03, the police surplus property. Alderman Wolf.
Okay. According to the memo, there is a rather large list of vehicles, equipment, et cetera, that the police department would like to get rid of. I just have one question.
Sure.
Where is all this stuff?
We have a storage cabinet up above the garage that's been filling up for as long as I've worked here.
And it's full.
Yeah, it's time to get rid of stuff.
I started to read through this, and I thought to myself, I've been in there, everything's organized, I don't know where this stuff is. Does anybody have any questions? I'm kind of glad that you're going through everything and cleaning house and start over.
This is January.
Do we really think we're going to be able to sell VHS units?
At least they're not beta.
We're going to see what property dot, propertyroom.com will take, and what they don't take, we'll recycle.
I'd actually be more leery of the fabric backseats.
Yeah.
Any money that we do get from this, where does it go?
It goes into the general fund, yeah.
Back into the general fund. I'm surprised you want to get rid of the stopsticks. Are those just the layout props? You won't use those anymore, right?
No, they're, I don't, I don't know of any agencies that are using them anymore. They're with the risk of a car going out of control, and once they flatten the tires...
I saw the neatest thing is just a little GPS that's glue, there's a glue-based GPS that they use now, and rather than trying to chase a car or anything, they just shoot this at the car, sticks to the car, really can't pull it off by yourself. I mean, it's really locked on, and then they just let the car go.
I think you have to be pretty close to accurately hit the car.
Right, I mean, basically, you're shooting it off the squad car. But I've seen, I've seen it a couple times when they show it in action. It's pretty interesting to see how it works. So I don't know if that'll be something we look at technology-wise, but definitely a lot safer than using a strip and taking a car out.
For sure.
So does anybody have any questions and comments? Okay, would anybody like to make a motion to recommend this to council?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Salvati, second by Stark. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Consent?
Yeah, I think that's consent.
All right, now we'll go to item number nine, which is Resolution 19-002 for the towing contract. Alderman Wolf.
Okay, this is for an extension on our contract that we have, well, I don't know if it's an extension or just a new contract for, the contract that we have for towing. I don't, just lost it. It'll be the same three companies, just extending that for at least one year, with the option to go further after that.
With the option for two additional years, yeah. We'll get it on a year-to-year basis.
Also written into the contract would be the ability of the department to be able to go replace somebody if they have issues with them, which I don't think that was in the last contract, was it? Or wasn't?
Yeah, I think it was in the last contract, yeah.
Is that something that I think we should have the ability to do, you know, if it's mid-year and all of a sudden something goes wrong, and we really need to stop using one, you know, vendor, that I think that would be a good idea? Any questions, any comments? Someone care to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. McFadden and Stark, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Consent.
That can go on as consent.
All righty, thank you. Item number 11, Resolution 19-004-R, approving the plats of dedication for parcels conveyed as a right-of-way for the Deer Path Road and Main Street intersection improvement project. Alderman Wolf.
This is for the big intersection. Sorry, we skipped number 10, you did it again.
I should just leave my glasses on. Item, we're going to go jump back then to item 10, Resolution 19-003-R, accepting warranty deeds for the parcels on Deer Path Road and Main Street intersection improvement project.
There are two of these with the, the first one is the deeds, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Oh, oh, three is accepting the warranty deeds for the parcels on Deer Path and Main Street. I'm curious, can pull this up.
Well, I'm not going to pull it up. I was just trying to get back to the agenda.
Oh. So I guess this is just the simple deeds on these properties, and we have to do this before we can move forward, correct?
Correct. I can provide some background.
Okay.
This is a county project that the city is partnering with them on, obviously for the improvement of Deer Path and Main, widening and installation of traffic signals. Because the project involves federal funding, a very specific land acquisition process had to be followed, and in this case, we had to use, well, any federal funding project, you have to use a third-party praiser to go through and negotiate with the property owners. In order to simplify that project, or that process, the city took on the role of accepting all of the deeds and all the property acquisition, and then we in turn will convey it back over to the county, at least the appropriate parcels back over to the county. So the first resolution is to accept those deeds. So these are, these are people who have negotiated a price, already recorded the deeds, which is a little different than normal, and Andrea covers that in her memo. But now the city has to accept these deeds for really all the parcels, and that's the first step.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Okay, can I get a motion to recommend a council Resolution 19-003-R?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Malley, second by McFadden. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we put this on the regular agenda so we can talk about it?
Sure.
I would like to bring up the fact that the amount of money that's being spent on this, majority is coming from outside the city.
Sure.
And that it's moving forward, I think a lot of people...
Yeah, get done. I mean, that's something that I think a lot of people...
A big issue, at least.
Really talk about. You know, I mean, there's, I think, daily comments on Facebook and other social media about how bad some of the intersections we have are, and the fact that this is one that we're doing something, that something's being done about.
Specifically, there was a couple letters, I believe, you received from high school students addressing them, so.
All right, then we're going to go on to the next one, which is Resolution 19-004-R.
This one is to approve the plats of dedication for parcels conveyed as part of the right-of-way for Deer Path and Main Street intersection.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by McFadden, second by Stark. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We could put that, we could put that one on consent, but the other one I'd like to have on there and talk about the money.
All right, that's fine. I think we need to make sure we mention the good work that the mayor did to acquire the 80% funding on this, though.
Yeah, because I think that that's something important that the public needs to know, that we're really working to try to get these things done, and get the money that is available to us used.
In her last paragraph there, Andrea gave you a brief update on the project, and we just learned late last week that the pre-construction meeting is now scheduled. So everything's on track, moving forward, and on schedule to proceed, as soon as the snow goes away. Or, because we're in the middle of October right now, as soon as the rain's down. Of course, as public works director, I shouldn't be saying that.
Yeah, you remember, this is recorded, so when, you know, it's March 15th, and we're under...
And it's still snowing?
No. It's your fault.
All right, item 12, Resolution 19-005-R, authorizing execution of a task order number order number 10 with Engineering Enterprise Incorporated in the amount of not to exceed $39,522 for South Prairie Street water main replacement, I E P A public water supply loan program. Um, Alderman Stark, or I mean, Alderman O'Brien and Alderman Chanzik are absent tonight, so Gary's just going to present this one and the next one also.
Thank you. Um, we do have an established master services agreement with EEI. If you recall, they did the master water main plan for us. They've always also worked on a couple of individual water main projects for us and some other items that we've already done at the treatment plant. And we'll talk about a little bit of that in the next item. This happens to be for a task order, uh, related to Prairie Street. This project is about 1.2 million and the next resolution is about 3.1 million. So for the utility to incur roughly $4 million worth of projects would, would basically necessitate immediate and pretty significant rate increases. So in order to forego that, municipalities often seek low-interest loan funding so that they can spread the cost of those projects out over many years. There is a little bit of cost on the front end in order to get a low-interest loan. You have to prepare documents, um, both the loan documents and plans so that you can explain to the EPA what it is you're doing and justify the fact, obviously, they're not going to just give you money unless they know what you're going to do with it. In this case, with Prairie Street, um, it is a water main reconstruction project, which in and of itself wouldn't necessarily qualify for low-interest loans, um, but because it does involve, um, the remediation of lead services and elimination, I should say, not just remediation, elimination of lead services, um, this will qualify for EPA low-interest loans, so that's why we are recommending to go forward with Task Order 10 with Engineering Enterprises. And this is a project, and both of these resolutions are projects that will cross over budget years, and, uh, so this is, uh, recommending to go forward for an amount not to exceed $39,522.
Okay, thanks, Gary. Any questions? Gary? When you talk about the lead services and that, are we pulling all those out of the ground when we do that or are we just cap them and leave them?
Um, you can cap, you can, you can abandon a lead service in place. That's not hurting anything.
Right.
The lead will leach into water, though, and then if you digest or consume that water, that's where you could potentially have a hazard. We won't be pulling the lead services necessarily out of the ground, we'll just be installing a new copper service.
Because I was reading about that in some other cities and that was one of the things they were talking about, that a lot of them, they just cap each end of it and leave it in place because it's unbelievably expensive to have to pull everything out.
Depends on which project or what you're doing and, and so there are some variables there, but there's no need to necessarily pull it out.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Dave?
Marty? Elliot?
Sorry, no, and just to, to stand on top of what Alan said, it's not just, uh, the cost, which is significant, yes, uh, but also the danger if you're disturbing the lead pipes that you're, you know, disturbing the lead into the water line. Um, but I do remember when we went down to Springfield last year, um, this was a very hot topic that many other municipalities are dealing with, so certainly if we're able to, um, acquire the low-interest loans to help with this, um, I'm quite certain there are many other communities that are looking to apply for these as well, then yes, I would say let's definitely try to take advantage of that opportunity.
And just so everyone is aware, in Area 3, the storm sewer separation project on Main Street, on Prairie Street, we all have lead services. We don't have a lot of lead services in town, we just happen to be working on three major projects in areas where we have lead services.
Anytime we get where we're touching any one of those, anytime we can get rid of them, I think that's.
That's what we do, try and do.
The right thing to do.
Exactly. We have been working, and I believe we brought to you, uh, the, the, the kind of framework agreement that our attorney, Drendel, um, developed for us when we do like a city project associated with a, a red, a lead service. In this case, because it's a loan and it's an I E P A project, we'll have to follow slightly different rules, but, but when we do a city project or this way, we work with the homeowners to get rid of those services.
Okay, other questions? If not, can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Elliot, second by Susan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion's carried. All right, Gary, you want to take the next one, Resolution 19 dash 006 dash R?
Thank you. And as I said, uh, previously, this one is a little bit over a $3 million project over several years that'll be phased. These are for improvements to the water treatment plant as well as some of our wells. Um, Jeremy does a good job of, I'm sorry, a little bit farther back here, EEI does a good job of outlining their scope of services on Attachment A. Again, we are seeking loan, our loan, um, funds for rehabilitation of our treatment plant. Plant number one is the original plant, that's circa 1994, 1995. Um, so when we talk about like filtration, rehabilitation, those are, those are going on 25, 30 years old now, so, um, if I did my math right there. If you have questions on any of those scopes, I can certainly talk about them in more detail, um, but I don't necessarily want to go through all of them in detail. And I don't know if I need to cover anything else. Again, we have master services agreement in place. This is an item that will cover over span, over a couple of budget years and recommendation for a value not to exceed 275,000.
Gary, the, uh, number you mentioned, 3 point some million?
Yeah.
Is that an engineer's estimate at this point?
At this point, that's just an engineer's estimate. Um, Jeremy's worked with EEI to basically come up with a rough estimate.
But if the cost goes higher than that or lower than that, this amount still stays the same?
For EEI, yeah.
EEI.
Because we're at the initial stages right now, so this is their, this is their initial money to develop all of the loan documents as well as the initial plans in order to get us to that point of getting low-interest loan funding, yeah.
Okay. Other questions? Needs to be done.
Mm-hmm.
All right, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Stark, second by Malay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All righty, opposed, we have none. So this will go on the city council agenda also.
Would you like the last two items on regular or consent?
Uh, what do you guys think? Just consent?
Consent, we can mention it, you know, that this is what we did.
Well, if we're going to mention it, let's talk about it.
Okay.
Let's leave it on the regular agenda then. Okay.
Very good.
Thanks, Gary.
Mm-hmm.
Item 14 is project status.
Uh, just to let everybody know, we have a meeting tomorrow with, uh, Dave Patzelt from Shodin, um, to finalize the environmental indemnification agreement and also the, um, Second Amendment to the RDA, uh, and we hope to bring those to you on January 15th, so long as we can have a meeting of the minds tomorrow. Also, we received notice, um, today from Prairie State Generating Company that, um, they are planning their first, um, lobby day down in Springfield with, uh, new government and his, a new governor and his cabinet coming in as well as many new legislators, uh, downstate. It's an opportunity for Prairie State and their member, um, utility, municipal utilities and co-ops to introduce themselves and build a relationship, tell the story of Prairie State and, um, some of their unique needs and, um, hopefully build some relationships down there. That's scheduled for Tuesday, April 9th down in Springfield, and they welcome any of their member communities to, uh, join them on that. So I'll provide additional information as it becomes available. Um, that's kind of all that's new since last night.
Anybody have any questions, Laura, on any projects? All righty, how about item number 15? Any others?
I have one.
Marty?
Fabian and Batavia Avenue.
I was hoping to get ahead of you.
Fabian and Batavia Avenue. I watched an accident happen there today. We've seen a lot of, everybody's fed up with the intersection as it is, state has no money, county has no money, um, and I think that we've heard over time a lot of excuses, not from government, but why people say, oh, people are on their phones, people are not paying attention, people are running the red lights. The accident today is not a case of that at all, in any way, shape or form. It goes to the way the intersection is laid out. I was going westbound on Fabian, I'm in the left turn lane. As I approached the intersection, the light was turning yellow, so I already know I'm not going to be able to make it through that intersection just because I don't, I travel that intersection every day and don't even try it. So as I'm pulling up to stop at the line, there was a, a gold car that was probably at my five o'clock, but it's close enough to the intersection that as it turns, you're not going to stop because you, there would have been enough time for him to enter safely on a yellow and probably clear the intersection. The other car was in the left turn lane waiting to turn north on the intersection. I can tell you, everybody's paying attention, but as the white car kept creeping, I already knew it was going to happen and was Siri, dial 911, even before the back end of the gold car hit the ground, because it, he slammed on his brakes, tried to avoid. Having seen where everybody says, it's the left turn, it's the left turn, it completely is, because if anybody can pull up their map, we've seen the way that it offsets. If I'm in the white car, turning, and he was just creeping, 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 trying to, trying to move, and I'm like, why doesn't he, he does not see him, he does not see him. Well, your C pillar, your A pillar for the car, as it turns, that car or that direction of it is going to now be in line, and I'm like, he doesn't see the car, because now you're shrinking your windshield to this and if you're paying attention to the intersection, seeing if everything else can clear. So is there any way that we can ask the state or the county to do a left turn lane there? I know that they're going to say, the backup, the backup of the bridge. But there comes a point where we're going to have backups because of accidents or we're going to have backups because of traffic. I will prefer any day traffic backups than accident backups, because I've seen many accidents, you know, live, and there is nothing worse than that completely utterly helpless feeling of cuss word, cuss word, it's going to happen, and I'm just going, I swear to God, I hope I don't see somebody get killed. And that was the way I thought it was going to be, and I'm just, all right, well, let's see what happens on this one, but it's, it's almost, it's almost inconscionable at this point that we don't have that left turn only on green, that we should be pushing for it. We're the ones, they're the ones that have to go clean it up all the time, and that's all we do, is we're paying, we're, we're paying for the cleanup on these things. Um, we're paying for it with their time and energy and just having to work these things all the time, um, that I, I would make a plea to the county to see what we can do about it going to a left turn.
Protected arrow only.
Left turn, protected arrow only.
Because you said lane originally, and I thought, that's not what he meant.
No, the left turn.
I would imagine that probably would have to be approved by I-DOT.
I'm sure, I'm sure it is, and I know we're going to hear all of the.
Right, but I, I mean, I think we need to, to go after the, the, the highest authority on it first and not try to step our way up to it, but go right to the top to begin with.
Whatever the case needs to be made, it should be a, a protected left turn.
If, if it's a question of seconding for, for the sake of support, I'll gladly join it. We've talked about this intersection plenty of times before. Lord knows it came up on a particular topic in the past, um, but it's regularly one of the top three to five, if not the number one, worst intersection that we deal with in this town. And we, and we've, we recognize it's technically not City of Batavia jurisdiction, but any pressure, any written pressures, public pressure that we can put on, I will gladly support that. That intersection, there has to be improvements to it.
And it's, and I would say, and it's not just the fact that there's accidents, it's the type of accidents.
Yeah, right. Oh, it was, it was bad.
And that was going to be my, another thing I would like to ask for is I would like to, you know, we need to get with Geneva and try to get some support from the Geneva City Council and the mayor to do this as well, and I think we need to look at, at least until they can figure out what to do with the intersection to straighten that out, drop the speed limit at all four corners of it, all the approaches to it. If everybody's going slower, if there is an accident, it will be less damage, less chance for fatalities if the speed is lower.
The car that was, they did not appear to be doing anything, it, it didn't even appear to be even excessive, like, I saw a, one of the posts that somebody said, oh, they were trying to beat the red light. And it's like, no, it's, you might have seen now when you look up, oh, it's red, because you weren't expecting it. You all, all of a sudden are paying attention because there's an accident and now you look up and it's red, so people, witnesses are horrible for that. Oh, it must have been red because they are inferring it. It wasn't, it was, it had just turned yellow in that, that decision-making mode where that person would, would have been safer for them to go through the intersection, but it was clearly, even the white car, I, I can't believe they don't see him, I can't believe they don't see him. I'm sure that they were paying attention because they were trying to eke out, they just could not see the car as it came west.
Laura, Gary, do you have any thoughts on?
I think Gary does.
Um, staff has met with the county, uh, to discuss this, and I think we've reported out to you guys that we've had these very discussions with the county. Um, I will echo the alderman's statements that the best way to probably handle this right now would be some sort of written form, probably in the form of our council and Geneva's council together. I'll admit, I don't know all the political intricacies that need to be, happen, but I, I think it really would have to come from your level in order to kind of actually result in any, any action. Staff has already gone through this several times with them and they're not, they're not going to, right, yield to staff.
What are your thoughts, Mr. Mayor?
Well, the timing probably couldn't be worse from the perspective of the state transportation secretary whom we know personally is leaving office Monday. So he'll be gone and that, and the new governor is not as, as of this afternoon named a new one yet. And, you know, there's a lot of suppositions, going to be some kind of a political person, we'll see who it is, but that's what's going on. I mean, I, I've had.
Susie's been in a couple of weeks.
I've had this conversation several times with everybody involved and, you know, it's real, pass it around, and, you know, I keep being informed that at the end of the day, Batavia doesn't have the control over this, it's a county on Fabian and a state on 31. And there's a little bit of an angst at the state right now with Geneva about that one lane thing that they got coming, going up and coming down there, because the state doesn't really think that's working real well. And that's, that's just another complexion into the whole problem. Uh, so we shall see what we shall see. I mean, if you guys want to pass a motion, I'll be happy to take it in and say, you're here again, we've got some issues going on. I think we should probably have the police department give us a little history that we could put into the record as to how many accidents we've had, how many have had injuries, you know, how many of them are that, were this left turn thing. And Sean, I'm assuming you could probably put something like that together for us, couldn't you?
Yeah, I can, I can tell you because I took a look at some of just the total numbers before coming to the meeting, and I don't have 2018's numbers, but in 2017, it was, um, the leading intersection with 29 crashes. In 2016, 2015, there were 20 crashes there. Now, I'm not sure which crashes were injury versus property damage only, but I'm certain to put that together, you know, get something put together.
Well, I know we've had, there have been two fadals in the last year at that intersection, right? There was the little car, I know definitely one.
I can think of one.
My question, in the 20 years that I've been here, has there been one fatal crash there? And that was like an antique, like antique.
Yeah, that's what it was.
That was maybe four, three, four, five fatal.
No.
No, it was two years.
Last year.
Two years.
Yeah, but the, um, I would be interested in knowing how many of the accidents that we have there are left turn, that that's.
Probably most.
Exactly. And with the, and having, I'm sure a lot of us that drive through that intersection, it's also not accounting for how many near misses we see all the time, that you're just like, oh.
I, I personally witnessed a crash there also.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, it's one of those things where you're just utterly helpless, and this isn't just, and I think that's why it's extra aggravating, is because I knew to stop behind the line because I know not to go into it, but if you aren't 100% on and not being a distracted driver, and it, it didn't have anything to do with those things, just in your normal course of driving, it can happen, and when it does, it's, I know you're saying about the, the timing isn't right, but the timing for those people, those two people today was not right, and those are the ones that I'm frankly more concerned about because having seen that, and then everybody else sees that, and then collectively that becomes a pit that people are afraid of, and you shouldn't have this fear of an intersection, which I think we do. And it's not an irrational one, because pretty much any day you can go there and it's going to happen, it's going to happen. And I think it's like, it's kind of our charge to do something about it.
And I think it's something that we have to really push for because, uh, mayor said, nobody really wants to touch it now.
Right.
And if the county and the state can't come up with any funds or any designs to change it, we need to do something to try to make it safer. And if we could slow people down to it and not allow them to turn on anything but a green arrow, it's got to make a difference.
So our city administrator, I suppose, could lead the charge with the police department to pull something together that the mayor could then present to the city council.
And Geneva.
Resolution and.
Touch base with Geneva and find out, the other thing I think would be interesting to find out is since Geneva went down to the, what I'll call the three-lane road, what has their accident frequency been on that stretch of that road? Has it gone down, has it gone up? And what kind of things have they seen? Because, yeah, sometimes it's a little bit more congested than it used to be, at least in my mind, the times I've traveled it, but it flows just fine.
I would add that this, this intersection too was included in the letters from the high school students to the mayor.
Yep.
It's widely known.
Well, yeah, everybody agrees that it's, that it's not a good intersection and, you know, the county agrees that it needs to be redone, and they have to figure out how to do it, and, you know, it's just, we can't wait for that to happen without doing something.
Well, and I think that's kind of to Gary's point, it's more, I think we ought to go more than just ask you to write a letter. I think it's along the lines of pass a resolution that, as we've done on a few other letters that, as we've done on a few other letters that have gone, so that we have official voting action, that this is, this is a little more serious than...
Right.
Can we write a letter and then hope it gets into somebody's hand? I think especially if nobody's seated yet, now is the time to actually say, no, you've got a full city council that's voting for this, that's saying, this needs to happen, because now it's, once it starts getting out there, now accidents that happen with injuries, it has a different perception to someone who's now charged with fixing it, because we've said it's an issue. We've taken official action that it's an issue.
Okay.
So it's the annual, everyone's complaining about no on-street parking again time?
Yes.
And so while I fully and will always support no on-street overnight parking, and while I will always fully support not parking over sidewalks, I'm wondering, though, because we do live in an age of technology, one of the big complaints people have is they don't like to talk to, and this is a quote, the crabby people at the police department who take their calls. And so I wonder if we can't do something to automate this process, so that people could actually log on and put information in, and so they no longer have to call and talk to a human being, because I'm sure people don't like to take the calls, you know, and be interrupted by somebody calling to say, I wanna leave my car on the street overnight. And so if people could just go on to our website and put in their license plate number and the date, to me, it does not seem like this is an awfully hard piece of software to write. So I am thinking that might be my legacy.
It doesn't have to be written, 'cause it's already out there.
Okay. So in my mind, this is an easy fix to a, a common complaint that a lot of citizens have.
How do you control how many nights they're allowed to park out there then? If it's a simple matter of...
Well, no, but then it, it's logged, and it's a...
Software to crack.
Yeah, today, this, it's the same as calling it in, now the police would have a log of who's parking overnight, and it's something you can pull.
But, but how, what prevents somebody from logging in and doing it for three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year? Where if they have to call the police department, the police department would have that in front of them and say, you know, what is the real reason for this? And, no, this is not acceptable.
You get your license plate, so...
And an address.
And an address. But we won't know until after the fact.
Prevent them from doing this.
So they log in and have a parameter and says, okay, you've had five nights already
this month. Full software can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and actually, this has, this has been brought up before, I know that.
Right.
I know we've talked about it, and it's actually, to, to your point, what you're asking for, it's actually more efficient, because both of those, software or a person, because how's the person gonna know?
Right.
They've, they've gotta look it up and check it.
Right.
And then all we, now we have a paid, I, I think it goes from dispatch to the watch commander, for them to go and take it. They've got better things to be doing, frankly, than, than doing that. I would think that the software would be much more efficient, that you pull it in, your address shows up, that it's the fourth time, sorry, you can't. Now you don't have to worry about it, and if that person who didn't wanna call in now wants to call in and make the case, well, they're gonna have to do it. And also, frankly, some of the people aren't too pleasant when they're calling in, so it saves our nice staff.
No.
I totally agree, and so that's why...
Some outside...
When, when this comes up on a regular basis, to me, there's just a, a much easier solution than having any, any personalities involved in it, anything else. You, you go on the website, you type it in, you're done. And, and I also think we need to be a little bit more forthcoming about what our actual policy is, because some people think you can call in every night for the rest of your life and you're all good, versus there is a limit of the number of nights in a row that you can have someone park on the street. So, you know, I think that all that information in one concise place where people can get to it, and, you know, I think it would solve just so many problems and keep our city looking the way we want it to.
We can look into an automated system versus the...
That would be awesome.
Back to you and let you know about that.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Mayor?
Throw this out, as long as we got some extra minutes here. Mayor Regina from St. Charles and I have been having an ongoing conversation, I think we've come up with some language today that we're, we're settling on. There's some interesting things happening with the legalization of recreational marijuana. And I don't know if anybody has an opinion, and I don't know if I really have an opinion, but the state of Illinois seems to be charging down the aisle down there that they're gonna legalize recreational marijuana in the state of Illinois. So I don't necessarily advocate that we get into a big debate here about it one way or another, because the state's gonna do what the state's gonna do. But I took a little reservation the other day when I get a call from Mary Randall at Metro West, and she wants to know if I would be willing to come to a meeting on the sixteenth in Sugar Grove at Engineering Enterprises' office, because the leader of the marijuana movement in Springfield wants to come out and talk to the mayors out here, because she hears that some of us are a little bit dissident about this. And so would I be willing to come to a meeting and talk to her, and they're gonna have pizza and beer for me if I come to this meeting?
Wow. At least it's not gummies or...
So I've never, honestly...
You have Fun In's, Doritos. Watch out for the, watch out for the extra oregano.
Or the gummy.
The salad.
So in all my years in, in this office, I've never had this one before. I've never been given this invitation, and I'm like, what is this all about? You know, we're, we're having this at a private place, so I guess that way we can avoid having the press be invited to this meeting. So I get on the phone with, with Regina, and I've communicated with Burns in Geneva. Geneva's gonna have a, a meeting on the twenty-ninth of January in which they're gonna have a public discussion about tobacco and everything up there in Geneva, and what they think should or shouldn't be done, and so he doesn't wanna take any, any stand on this thing, but I think Regina and I, as just mayors, are about to publish a letter in which we're gonna send it to the new governor and to the state legislators, saying, well, you're gonna go ahead and do this, we're not gonna get involved in that conversation, but we would suggest that if you are gonna do this, there are certain things that maybe should be in this legislation. And I guess we're gonna suggest that they need to have a discussion as to what age you're gonna sell marijuana to, because in this town right now, again, along with kind of the, what Marty just talked about, the traffic light, I'm getting a lot of conversation from parents in this town about vaping going on, specifically at Batavia High School in the bathrooms, and I've talked to the superintendent of schools, and she's telling me, yeah, they're fit to be tied out there, 'cause they go in there all day long and, and vape themselves in the bathroom. So I'm not, I'm not sure we, we as a world here really know what age we should be selling marijuana to people or not, but I guess we're gonna say that's something you need to talk about. But further in this letter, we are going to also raise the issue, let me see if I may have a little letter here. We're going to, we're going to raise the issue about if you are gonna tax this thing, number one, can it, can any city in the state of Illinois then apply their own local tax to it, because it's marijuana? Are you gonna legalize that? And then we also raise the issue that if in fact you're out here and you're gonna do this to everybody, what is going to be in, the, the big pitch here is this is gonna have this huge revenue stream coming at us from the state. Now, we just went in, we just got the report from Tri-City Ambulance that last year in the three towns, we had seven-hundred-and-eighty ambulance calls. Now, that's average of better than two a day, that had some kind of situation that very well, and many of them were, we know for a fact, drug-related, that somebody had taken some kind of drug, marijuana many times was part of the, the subject that was being responded to. So we've had this huge, rather active ambulance program or response to marijuana-related issues already in the tri-cities. Now, when you legalize it, I'm not sure what that's gonna do, but I think there's a fear that it's not all gonna be good. So I guess we've raised the issue, or wanna raise the issue, that if you're gonna raise all this money, shouldn't you mandate in the legislation then that a certain percentage of this money should be driven toward the idea of, of drug education in Illinois and enforcement? We are having a bad problem at the ambulance, where we pick up people and, that are having psychological issues or threats of suicide, or drug overdoses, or whatever have you, and many times the recommendation is we'll take them up to Elgin State Hospital. Well, when we get them to Elgin State Hospital, they're there for maybe three, four, five hours, and then they get released. And they joke at the fire station, sometimes they beat us back to town before the ambulance gets back here. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's a situation that's kinda open-ended, and it's causing a lot of issues, so I was just gonna let you know that I'm gonna put my name on a letter in which I'm not saying, oh, don't do it, we're just raising some questions about how it's gonna be organized and, and sold to the general public. As far as the meeting on the sixteenth, that's the exact same time that I have to be in Arlington Heights at the Pace Bus Board Meeting, so I won't be able to go, so I've asked Dan Yule and Laura are gonna go. If any of the rest of you wanna go, I'd be happy to throw your name on the, on the attendees' list too, if you wanna go out and see this dog. It's this Kelly that's the state representative that wants to have all you out there to tell you the goodness of this whole idea. And I know the, several of the police chiefs are wanting to go, 'cause they are having some of the same doubts and issues that I'm sharing with you here tonight about what it is that we are going to do here and what we aren't. And so I guess, just for your information, that's gonna be coming out, and I didn't want anybody to be surprised that, that I was saying it. As I say, I'm not saying, don't do it, I'm just saying, okay, we're gonna do this, you know, there's a few things maybe we can do to make this a little bit tighter and better control and better, better use of some of this money that you're gonna be supposedly generating. So I've been in almost daily conversations with Dan Yule and his staff about this, and I know they have some serious reservations about what they think could happen here with this whole thing as it applies to, to our town, because this, this vaping thing is, is very problematic. And, you know, we talk about things you don't wanna talk about, or people talk about, or, that's one of them that's really in the face of those at the school and the school district and whatever, that it's out there and it's, it's going strong.
Okay. Thanks for the update on that. Gary, you have something too?
I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you to the fire department and police department for their assistance this past weekend. Saturday morning, we had an employee who was injured at the wastewater treatment plant, literally just minutes after dialing nine-one-one. The police department was the first on-site, followed quickly thereafter by the fire department. The paramedics rendered aid to the employee and transported him to the hospital, and the police department took the step of actually going to the employee's spouse's home and, and notifying the spouse and offering to, to bring her to the, to the hospital as well. So I just wanted to say thank you to both police and fire for, for their assistance. The employee is, is out of the hospital now, and we can provide more details as we get into an investigation, but I just wanted you guys to be aware and, and know that the great services that the police and fire provides, so.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else?
Dave, just real quick, Laura reminded me, there's a Flags and Flannel event, which is the fundraiser for the Flag Day Monument. It is March, Friday, March first, and tickets just went on sale, it's a community dinner at Abbey Farms. Tickets are a hundred bucks, so if you wanna order them at Eventbrite before they're sold out.
What's it called again, Marty?
Flags and Flannel.
Flags and Flannel.
You wanna send us a link, so we can find it?
I'll send the invite to everybody on Facebook and...
Carry your pigeon over to Dave.
Thank you.
Just, just walk down there. You gotta walk the dog sometime, don't you? Take the dog down. Only a block and a half away. Knee-spirited, wow.
I'll send it on Stone tablet.
That was, that was old.
He's only got three more months to do this, so.
Anything else? Marty's done. All right, motion adjourned.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.